Do you need to anybody? I want to call and order our council meeting for September the 21st, 2023. The city of Nelson. At this time, we'd like to have a Lord of Prayer. Father God, we thank you for today. And we continue to ask, Lord, that you would lead God to bring all the decisions that we make, be with our officers, our EMTs, our fire fighters, Lord, and our servicemen overseas and here. And we just thank you for your goodness. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Father, you're Lord of the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, um, we're going to need a couple of appearances. Have the room for, oh, sorry. Let's do for the gym first. Sorry. Can I get approval for the agenda, agenda approval?
Motion to approve. Second.
Wait a minute.
You gotta be able to have so.
Oh, well, add B, work session before military status, proceed, and then C, just vote on disclosure of equipment.
So we want to add B and C. So we want another track. And you want to add, um.
Under what new or old?
New.
Mine.
Mine, B, and I see. And then the other one is to, um, this document. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Nathan, can you get a second?
Second.
But David?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Now, just a second. Okay. All right. Now we have public appearances. Do we have, I'll open it up for public affairs. Do we have anything or anybody that would like to say anything in regards to tonight's agenda? Okay. We'll take that as a note, and we'll move on down to approval of our minutes for September the 7th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
David?
Second.
Wait. All in favor? All right. Department reports. We have the Lieutenant Deesus here and his, some of his officers, um, authorized over to you guys at this time.
Sure. And, uh, and may I read in the council, I just want to introduce Crystal Maskey. Uh, he's one of our officers that, uh, that's up in this area. And as I mentioned to you earlier, it's nice to meet the precinct commanders, nice to meet the sergeant and his commanding officers, but we may not necessarily be the ones that come out to your communities and answer your calls. So we want to kind of improvise here a little bit and, uh, introduce the officers that you're going to see. So when you guys call 911, uh, these are the guys that are going to be out there. We'd like you guys to have an aim of the face. So he's going to go over stats, uh, in the city of Nelson for last month, and, uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Maskey here.
All right. So again, my name is Chris Maskey. Uh, been with the sheriff's office for about four years. Most of that time I spent down the, the upper precinct, south part of county, uh, actually a uniform patrol division. Shortly, uh, me and my wife, as you found out, we were having our first child. So, but I'm transfer requests to come up through the ball ground since February of this year, been over here. Uh, kind of going into the report for 2023 in August, we had 121 calls for service. Now, the 121 calls for service is a mixture of actual physical 911 calls as well as self-initiated activity. Uh, out of the 121, we had over 100 extra patrols documented. So that's us, us drowning around, uh, looking for any suspicious activity, uh, criminal activity, anything like that. Going more into that, we've had 16 traffic stops inside the city of Nelson. Most, if not all, I believe, were written or verbal warnings given to them. We did have one domestic dispute, and it did result in a arrest, uh, for family violence. We did have one suspicious person call, and that was at the playground, uh, in town. I ride on scene and upon an investigation, a couple of kids were just using the playground incorrectly. They were going up the slide instead of going down the slide. Uh, so we found it unfounded, uh, for this suspicious person. There has been one case of stopping. Right now, we've been working jointly with school PD, and it's been documented, and it's currently inactive until further information comes up. We did have one broken window call. It was actually down here at the Bethesda Church. One of the residents, she actually just moved from Gwinnett. Her car window broke. She thought, uh, the window got shot out. Investigating it, it was just a small pebble from, uh, like a lawnmower or anything coming up, and then the windshield breaking it. And then lastly, we had one accident, a vehicle accident, and that was on the intersection of Jordan and Old Nelson. Male driver ran a stop sign, later hospitalized at Kinnis Town Hospital, but he's expected to make a full recovery. Some of the complaints we've been getting, and this kind of goes with the traffic stops, um, we've had speeding complaints on Old Nelson Road, uh, as well as Yellow Creek Road. Now, I know you guys have the, I think, four new speed bumps on Old Nelson Road. Three, three new speed bumps. That has drastically decreased, uh, the amount of speeders going down there, uh, just kind of helping out hard cause. But we are sitting on Old Nelson, Yellow Creek, making most of, uh, the traffic stops up there. This is going to be out in the community. Lastly, I know there's an ongoing issue with, uh, commercial trucks going through Old Nelson, kind of using that as a cut through to Rebus Mountain Road. We've actually had several training, uh, situations. We call them roll call training, as before every single shift, uh, where we've actually touched and refreshed our minds on some of the, the laws with commercial vehicles, because there's a plethora of them, as you can imagine. We were, we actually stopped a couple of those vehicles going down, uh, Old Nelson. Each person we've talked to has actually had, or they were going to a local job site, uh, instead of using that as a code. But we're going to continue to monitor everything, uh, as far as this, the complaints goes. So you guys have any questions or anything?
Um, has anybody, I have not heard, but has anybody heard of, you guys heard anything? I know you probably would, um, because I know they were contacting you about the traffic, the through traffic on Pickens Street there. Is it slowed down some? I know, I know we talked.
With the commercial motor vehicles?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's what he's referencing, uh, in the roll calls that he's referencing. I used to go with a traffic unit, I refreshed myself on commercial motor vehicle laws. Uh, the Georgia Public Safety District, you'll see the MCCD vehicles, uh, they do nothing but commercial motor vehicle stops. Uh, we refreshed on what we're able to do, uh, and that's what he's saying. So these guys were actually tasked with going out and stopping some of those vehicles. Uh, it's just, unfortunately, uh, the ones that we stopped, they say that they're having a local delivery. So, you know, that may be a situation, uh, of, you know, maybe somebody's telling them that's the case or whatever, you know, we don't know that, but the ones that we have stopped were literally making a local delivery somewhere in that area. So.
It seems to be the first thing that they tell us. We're going, we're making, we have a local delivery.
So it's almost, it's almost like words gotten out, you know what I'm saying? That, that these, these trucking companies or these dump truck companies, someone's told them, hey, if the cops stop you, just tell them I'm making a local delivery. Because unfortunately with us, when it comes to those particular, you know, at the county level versus the state level, making those particular stops, there's not much we can do. If they are making a local delivery, it doesn't apply to the through traffic laws.
Yeah. Is there anyone you guys could follow them to see where they're delivering to?
Uh, so, I mean, well, unfortunately, unfortunately for us, we go as far as Rebus Mountain, Pickens County line. So, I mean, define local, and that would be splitting hairs as well. So, so these guys have done a good job, you know, from, from, you know, my directors and coming from him.
Oh, no doubt.
At our command level, but, uh, they're, they're doing the best that they possibly can to, to stop those. But unfortunately, it's very difficult to enforce that, uh, with citations and whatnot when the, you know, the trucking industry or whatever the case may be, may have informed their guys of, just say these words, and there's not really much they can do. Uh, now, the, the Georgia Department of Public Safety, uh, there is a possibility, and I've got some contacts, and if it continues to be a problem, I'll get one of those black, uh, black tacos up here and say MCCD on it, and, uh, uh, we should be able to get some corrective behavior taken place.
There you go. That goes a long way, and I, I really appreciate your presence and what you guys are doing. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for, um, for officer? Is it?
Demasking.
Demasking. There you go. I want to say yes. We'll need another.
That's okay.
I'm going to take those. No, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor's report. Um, I'm with the county today. Um, the sidewalks, um, they are, um, for the sidewalk project that we have currently. Um, the engine, it's with the engineers right now, and they're writing up the specifications. Um, they're looking at cost-saving options for us, asphalt instead of cement with, with the runs that we're looking at, um, cracking and stuff like that. So it's for future and for now, just, uh, things like that. He's going to be getting back to me with, with some of those numbers and, and some of those recommendations, um, because that's not only on the, um, on the upfront cost, but it will be a future cost as well. Um, the second thing is, um, the new city hall stuff. We are starting those talks now, um, with the commissioners, and Miranda's going to be looking into the multi-use, um, um, grants, um, that's maybe, may be available to us at the time, whenever we, we start looking at and making that project a real. So, um, but we'll go ahead and start having those conversations now with, with the counties. The tax digest, um, we did talk about the tax digest today. Um, we will, um, the first thing that we're going to be doing is doing a joint meeting with, um, with a group. It's, it'll be an informal meeting with a group of people to, um, look at, um, how we can hold folks accountable to the laws. So, yeah. So, um, and I will get, we'll, we'll have more information on that. We have set a meeting up. We plan on doing that for October. We did discuss the fire SDS for the Pickens side. We can do an IGA with Pickens. They do not currently have a fire tax, so to speak, um, like Cherokee. Cherokee is still bound under the, under the, you know, the fire taxation, um, for this side. However, um, I met with, um, it was Mr. Schlong, and his, he said that currently they're at a four. Their ISO, ISO rating is at a four. Online, it shows a five, but he said that's definitely a four. And that the problem with, with this for people would be that when they pick up talking rock, and it's not if, it's going to be when they pick up talking rock, they know they're going to have to do it, um, that ISO rating will be pushed from a four to, he said six or seven. So it's going to be, you know, it's going to be high. Now, what we can do, and I have asked for a meeting to be set up with, um, Sherry Collett and also Chief Breaker to look at, um, at the cost. And, you know, I think currently, um, we're at around 119 for our fire tax for the city wide, and everybody participates in that. Um, we're going to look at the cost versus Pickens not being covered under that, um, fire tax for Cherokee as a city resident versus what your insurance is going to be. So that's kind of where we are now. With that, uh, I'll keep you posted as we have those meetings. Again, that will be in October. The other option that we can look at is have a conversation with the county. The city of Nelson, I did a bunch of research over the weekend and I spoke when we were speaking with, um, with the folks today. Our call volume for fires, um, we don't have a volume there. So we don't have businesses like gas stations, uh, restaurants, things of that nature. With that said, um, we do have a, of the firehouse here that they do rent, uh, or lease from us for X amount. They have the truck here. However, they don't really use it because our fire services, pretty much from what I got today, was is that Tate Fire Department makes it here every time before Cherokee does. It's not a problem. It's really good for us. And they do have to service because we are in the county. So, um, taking a look at maybe talking with the county after I have all the information about maybe the possibility of a reduction for this area, since we don't have the call volume, and since they're not first to respond. So those are some options that we're looking at. Like I said, I should have more, um, more information for you guys with that, um, in October. Anybody have anything for me? Also, um, a town hall meeting, I want to set a date for the town hall meeting for our, for our candidates for the election. Does anybody have a preference to that time? Do you want to ask council meetings? You guys have a problem with doing it, um, right after our next council meeting?
What date is that?
October 2nd.
October 2nd? Or we could do it like mid-October, like set all like a special meeting?
Yeah, on a special meeting or just want to do it?
Do it before the 2nd and then before, um, early.
Yeah, that's fine.
We have a bunch of people calling in and asking about candidates, and it's that we can meet them and.
It'll be, it'll, it'll be like a meeting grade. You guys can tell a little bit back yourself what you voted for, what you, the ones that are on council, what you voted for and, and the improvements you've helped make. So October the 2nd, um, after the regular meeting.
It'd be all right. It's a short meeting.
Uh, we should be. I don't intend, I mean, because we're, we're covering most of everything we need now, um, here, so I think it'd be a short meeting, honestly. And I mean, we'll limit our, our town hall too, so we'll have to extend it to everybody. So, um, let's see. Do you want to do it October 2nd? Do you want to do it different day?
That almost sounds good.
Can I get a motion to approve for October 2nd? You got, or we don't really need a motion, we just need agreement. You guys good with October 2nd doing that? We'll add it to the agenda then. Okay. Next up is our finance report with Ms. McCallum. Turn it over to you.
Okay. All right. So our revenues are at 85%. They should be 85 or more. And then, um, general fund expenditures are at 88%. Again, should be, um, that's actually, we're doing a really good figure. All right. So general fund, 842,282. SPOS 4, 155,221. SPOS 2, um, Pickens is 170,895. SPOS 5, Cherokee is 839,517. The cash reserve fund is 168,021 dollars, and SPOS 2020 is 909,245 dollars, and the grant fund is 220,442 dollars. 90,442 dollars. Other than that, I mean, we're still at the beginning of our, um, budget, so we're pretty, pretty good.
Do you have any other questions for me?
No, I wanted to ask before we come on the mayor's stuff, where are we at on the phase one of the park?
Um, we're.
Haven't heard anything in a while.
We're not yet. Um, I've got to get with Michael Kidd. Um, we had talked, the, I believe we voted on the phase one of the park already, so we were finishing up the little park. We still have, matter of fact, we're voting tonight on the ADA complacency to that.
Yeah, I've gotten an email back from him. I still need to get pricing to get that stuff wrapped up, and then we're going to move there.
And then once I have these two things moving, then I will have a meeting with Michael Kidd and have him come in, and we'll get, we'll get started. So we'll start looking at our budget, we'll start looking at what we're doing. We've already defined our first phase, and then we can get started. So we just wrap it up, do some, right now with our, this project, getting it bid out, and then our key part. Okay? All right. Um, unfinished business, drainage project for phase two, and you're, you're up.
Turn it over to Dan.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I've got a foot on something. I have a boot on. It's after hours, something.
I did, I did send an email out and let everybody know that basically you're here tonight to talk about some choke points and the 100-year versus the, uh, 50-year plan. So that's what he's here about, um, some stuff that they can.
Kind of follow up from where we left off last time. Kind of, last time over here, we kind of talked about Hillside, the drainage improvements, we, and then also connecting, uh, crossing the road and kind of going down because of the flooding issues that is probably on our head. I don't remember the name, but.
So they grew.
Yes. So that was kind of, and there were some questions, and she even was here at the last meeting, and she brought up some, we, we checked some piping, the piping was surveyed as a, I think it was a 36-inch, it is a 20, a 30-inch, they were correct. So that's been fixed, and I think you, you had mentioned, hey, let's go ahead and follow across of this, let's finish the lower section. Let's go ahead and make the connections down to this, uh, section. So that's kind of what we need. So let me back up to the first part. So the first part, uh, got some notes. The only thing that we need to kind of solve is when we're, we're kind of sorry because of this, I don't know if you guys know, his house always floods there at the time. And the only way to fix that is to do some significant grading. I wouldn't say significant, but superimpose that road, because he doesn't want a curve in his front yard or his house. His house is across the lightway, probably shouldn't even be there the way it is, but it's a legal issue, and you're probably going to have to buy some lightaway on the other side of the, of that road to basically fix the problem, if that makes sense. So the, it's, it's relatively flat, and we would have to build a significant curve, and you can't, and anybody, you'd have to go over that curve or his driveway, otherwise we're just diverting water to his driveway. So instead of the road being flat, it's just going to superimpose and allow the water to kind of stay on that side and go to our drain. I can't put a drain there if it, if it's continuing to flow down to his, his property. So that road, or the, not the entire road, but a section of that road will have to be modified to superimpose it to the north.
In the curb? Is it in the curb?
In the curb, right in front of his house. Just, we probably have.
It's a house.
It's a small section of about.
They got Sergio from Nordic.
Uh, it's 50 to 100 feet, not, not a significant amount of, of grading.
And we, um, and we have any easement? I think the house is like literally like.
Well, I'm talking about the cross.
He's talking about.
I think that's Irish Jones. That's that house that Irish Jones is over.
To do more kind of opposing, we'll have to probably expand the lightway on that side, or at least to, to, otherwise we can't, we can't grade on the property to fix the problem.
So is it, um, do we have an easement? I mean, does the city?
We have a 10-foot. We have a, um, right over part of the road. I don't know how far it is.
Yeah, but it's not enough. That's, that's what I'm saying. That's the only catch on the other side. You don't have enough room to superimpose that road, because, because the bank is there. We've got to kind of build a little ditch and set back in the bank.
And do we have an idea of how much? You said 50 to 100 feet?
I, I'll give you a, if you want to know the idea of kind of chasing that now, is that even possible? Because if it's not possible, then they won't settle any of it. We can, can't acquire that, then we'll need to go by the drawing board, but right now we really, that's the easiest way to fix this, the cheapest and easiest way to completely solve their drainage problem on that side of the road.
Okay.
I'll give you some dimensions.
Okay. So if you do that, I'll reach out.
And it'll, it, I'll just basically blow that one section up and scale it off so you can kind of see where we're facing.
Yeah. Um, besides, I mean, if we, if we end up purchasing that, that piece of land, then.
It's not significant, and it is a ditch, it's an embankment right there, but we do have to kind of.
Encroach.
Encroach it, encroach it, actually pave over, and you don't want to lose all the lightaway right there. So that's kind of the only, kind of hiccup on point to this upper section we kind of started. We feel real comfortable about the drainage for, for Hillside, we've resolved the issues. We've, we've, um, corrected some of the, we've came out and did some surveys, follow-up surveying, the shovels and elevations, the roads, and then basically we're going to cross over the road where it's currently at the very bottom, where, where the pipe is currently, the head wall at East Cherokee. We're going to cross over and basically divert all the water over to the other side like we talked about, and then it's going to come down to here, which is right in front of her house. And she said, we checked the pipe, and the pipe was undersized, so we basically said, all right, no big deal, we'll replace that pipe. But this is where we kind of took it up, went around and replaced this pipe, but then we said, all right, let's go ahead and extend this, what you wanted to do, all the way down, let's go ahead and extend it up. Well, some of that is already piped, and this is the existing pipe that I, so the choke point starts right there at the creek. I've got a 36, it's actually a three-by-three cover. I've got an 18-inch on this side, and then I've got her string as a whole other basin on this side of the road. So I've got a, a 30, three-by-three, an 18, and a string that's got a 24-inch, all coming into a 30-inch pipe. So the choke point is the 30-inch existing pipe. Now, this is based on the survey, we said, if you didn't do anything on this lower section, we said, all right, we just want to do this upper section. And the reason we did this is because we said, we can't, in good engineering practice, tell you that that's not the problem, and it goes back to Centerwood, Canso Avenue. We're kind of designing things correctly for 100-year flood, and then we've got a choke point down here somewhere located at Canso. Now, that, and again, Canso is a little bigger deal, because you guys had flooding of residents, you had, it became more of a headache. It was probably, um, I don't know, what the, what the one in 100-year or the two in 100-year. Our, we designed based on one in 100-year, I even had Trey to do a 50-year study, and basically the 50-year is a 2% chance it's going to flood. And we said, what does that mean? It just means it's going to pop out right back up here in her front yard, but it's kind of like where the, where the, where it crosses the creek, we've got a man over there, junction point, and that's basically where it would start backing up. And it would not necessarily flood her home, because all that is down past her homes, it's just going to, the water's going to shoot flow across the, uh, the ground. Now, the ones that have been here the longest, tell me, have you ever had any flooding there? Has it ever flooded? And then.
And either since they were pushed that pipe?
No.
How, how long is that 30-inch? Uh, how far does it go? Is it?
It, it goes essentially, it starts as a, right there, when it goes underneath the creek, it's a 30, then it turns to a 36, and then it turns back to a 30. So the 30 is right on the corner of the, uh.
Fire station.
First building, the fire station. It crosses, and it goes to a 30 until it gets to this box cover that's really big. So it's, it's a significant project. And the reason I bring this up is I, I kind of said, well, that's what we, we better design for what needs to be done to kind of meet the 2% chance of flooding, which means twice, twice every 100 years. If you incorporate that into it, if you, if we didn't have what was already existing, that's what we could do, but since we already have something, this would double the cost, because you're, you're, you're having to dig up the road.
Just change out the one pipe.
Change out that one pipe.
From a 30 to a 36.
Well, it'd go to a 42.
A 42.
Yeah. It's, it's way undersized. So we made all.
About four years ago.
And that's where we're about to business the hand of water land and everything that is out.
Like that, David, you said it was replaced with that?
About 20 years ago.
Yeah, about.
They must have done it.
Now, this is based on a survey, or it's fairly inexpensive to have somebody, that guy that you guys know run that camera camera there, verify, because he's, we're just, he probably looks at one hand, because he's a man, and he sees it on a pipe diameter, and then he's assuming the sizes. He didn't assume, he measures the sizes.
See, the other line went under the, uh, fire department, and that's where the cover collapsed at. We had a camera run through there, and that was where it collapsed at, and that's the reason he had to go around on the outside. And that's the reason he had to go around on the outside, the way it did it now.
You think we need to get somebody to run a camera through it?
It's, it's expensive, yeah, because we're, I'm, I'm basing the design, we added on.
Remember who we had?
On what a survey. Yeah, so that way it kind of will let you know, hey, it's in really good shape. And, and you want to say, well, it's never really flooded in this area, it's never backed up. So we, we were kind of worried, maybe that's not so much to worry about at this time, we know it needs to be addressed. There's nothing that we're going to do is necessarily going to force it to flood, we're just basically diverting the water that's already going down there. But it definitely needs, it's, it's a, it's kind of a, for an engineer, it's a red flag because we know it's undersized.
Can you get us a quote for the camera study?
Yeah, and, uh, you guys, I think y'all used them before.
Yeah. She asked me if I was in there.
Yeah, so if you need his number again.
Yeah, probably, because it's.
Just to confirm, and, and as I'm, so when we go to put this thing to bid, we need to basically say, look, we know we're going to do part one. We're comfortable with the design, do we want to incorporate part two in the cost estimate, maybe put it as an option, a line or something? Because this may kick it over and you go, my, whoa, we started out a couple hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars and now we're at three, three hundred thousand. But it's, they give it easy double or triple cost, just because you're in the grass area, smaller pipes. Now we're talking about forty-two inch pipe underneath the road, underneath existing utilities, makes a big difference. So.
Yeah.
So that's the choke point that I was talking about, I just wanted to ex, kind of explore that.
So is long, if I'm, am I here correctly when you say that, that is long, is, is the pipe's in good condition?
I think you reassess, if it's in good shape, uh, then we, you know that there's. Stormwater pipes is all based on model and probability, it's never flooded in that area. So, you know, once every hundred years. And are we okay, do we want to spend a whole bunch of money for that one flood event? Well, if it floods a million dollars worth of damage, well, yeah, we better fix that. But I'm not sure what we're going to damage, it's probably going to, it's probably not going to hit any of these buildings because it's up higher than the grass. And it's probably just going to hit the road and then go shoot flow across the road. So you're not going to have a lot of property damage if it did flood.
Anybody have any questions? Whether or not to that?
We just wait on that camera, the way down, then you look at that and see.
It'll confirm it, like I said, you could always line on that on the bid and just, and then discuss it with county and say, is this something we can do? Is this something that's a possibility and can have low probability, uh, or do any property damage? Maybe I don't want to spend the money, maybe there may be something that Chris will be going to spend money on.
We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
I'll, I'll look, um, so you, are you.
Here's the full save if anybody's interested in those, that's just one page.
You're going to send the number or you're going to get?
I'm going to send, yeah, I'll give it. All righty.
Thank you, Barry, have a good one. Okay. All right, so, um, just set that up as soon as we have a number. I did tell you all the counties, uh, you've agreed to an IGA to, to project manage this and bid it out, just like they did the other one, right? All righty, the next step is the kitty park drainage. And do y'all want Barry in here for that or you good with just the minutes that we have?
He sent me an email at the meeting, he, he met Bubba down at the, um, the playground. I just copied the email, I think it's, uh. And it was what they discussed, um, said he visited the, the park with Bubba and, and Anhau on September eighth. Based on the discussions and observations, he recommended the following. Um, complete a professional survey of the area to verify the property lines boundaries of the park and land over the city. Um, we actually have that, it's in the office. Um, engine terminal right away for Spring Street entrance, considering that, this is based on my understanding, never designated as a road. So we do need to verify that that entrance coming onto Blue Ridge is technically a road because it was, I think the original one was on Dogwood. So I'm not sure if the county actually has it listed as an entrance there.
Well, I think it went after the side of the store that used to be there.
Yeah, I just don't know if it was like an entrance to the store, like their parking lot thing and then it was connected, I don't know. So I think we can just verify that it was, you know, just to make sure kind of. So a second was to evaluate installing potential parking spaces along the front of the park, including handicap parking, insurance pension space length, et cetera. Um, based on the area needed for parking installed concrete curb and sidewalk to divert water to Blue Ridge Avenue. Uh, new sidewalk should tie into existing sidewalk on Blue Ridge Avenue, existing fence may need to be really relocated to accommodate parking area. Which Bubba had brought up, basically just moving the existing fence back closer to the playground area, which would accommodate that. Um, evaluate installing drainage improvements on the north side of Blue Ridge Avenue in front of the marble plant to prevent erosion and allow stormwater that currently pawns on the roadway to drain into the existing, the existing catchment. So instead of me trying to paraphrase what he said, I just printed this email out. So some of this stuff was, um, part of the stuff that Bubba had originally sent estimates for. But I think, I think Brett's actually out of town until this weekend maybe, so I've not asked him for a new estimate. So I wanted to all see deeply recommend the recommendations from the engineer before asking for another estimate and seeing, you know, obviously we can ask for more than one. But this way you're getting it directly from the engineer.
What about handicap access to the actual park?
Yeah, we're going to set a ramp or something up there. And Bubba had actually said something about potentially like backfilling with dirt.
Yeah.
Including clothes that were.
Right.
Plastic.
Right.
Thing around the park that encloses the mulch. What is it to hold the mulch?
That would be nice.
And that would, honestly, I think if you could backfill it, that may take care of some of the problems.
Yeah, I don't know with the technical, I mean, I'm sure that's somewhere.
He said something about just coming in and putting some dirt around it. Even if you left like a little bit, it's, I mean, we have like ADA compliance swings in there for our children.
Right.
And then we have this foot tall.
Right.
Foot planks.
Right.
You can maybe just get the playground supplier right down, because if I'm not mistaken, we asked about that and they said the way it was was fine as far as all the rules that they had to go by.
Yeah, if I was working fine, I wouldn't spend a whole bunch of money.
That cannot be ADA compliance.
Well, I mean, how do you bring a child in there with a wheelchair?
In a wheelchair, it can't be.
No, it's like.
Well, I mean, the mulch passed in there, you're getting ready.
People who bought it, they come down and go back over it, because like I said, if you broke that question, would they? Did you meet your responsibility, I guess is how she put it, something along that line.
Yeah.
So.
It is, I just don't remember seeing the playground having that, that, her foot tall order around that.
I thought.
I've never seen a playground like that.
No. I thought that they were always, that thing was there, but it was buried.
Yeah.
But perhaps it could not be buried.
Because of the.
For the, because of the, yeah. I mean, that's very possible.
Yeah, right there.
It used to have six by sixes all the way around it.
Right.
Yeah. Well, they had a zero entry coming into it, like where the, the gate was when you came in from the playground. I mean, when you parked and the, the gate was open, you can just walk in.
Yeah.
Uh, let me call, I'll call Carrie. I'll, I'll shout out to her tomorrow and just have her come down, take a look at it with me and see if it's supposed to be that way, not supposed to be that way. Uh, um, and then I'll ask for what ADA complaints he is regarding the, the, that barrier.
As I said, we touched on that, hey, we memorized it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We talked about sidewalks and everything coming in around, get to the tables and all, so.
Maybe there's different rules because it's a, you know, I mean, I feel like she would know, but.
No, she seems to be very knowledgeable. I'll get her a call, I got an action here.
You would think there would have some.
For the plastic thing, absolutely, yeah.
You would think there would be something out there.
If you run into the back, you know, if you got a ramp, you go with the plastic thing.
Yeah.
Sidewalk all the way through the embedded area and everything to get to the one thing, it's.
Yeah. It opens up the door to other scrutiny.
We have to have another gauge or something. Maybe like four foot on the gauge, a thirty-six is big enough, I think we went for double eight. If I remember correctly.
Yeah, we got eight. On those kids.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anything else you want me to run by? I, I'll take use of this email here, um, from Max's engineering, if you want to have a meeting with her. And, uh, and I'll ask those questions and then I'll get back to you on it, on our, at our October meeting. Okay. Anything else?
Did Michael include that section of parking curb, everything in there in the master plan? Thought that's what we directed, so we already have a plan drawn for.
We do. They were just being market checking another block, so we do.
We always paid them in the plans to design that parking area, didn't we?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's designed. Anything else regarding unfinished business, kitty park?
So if he's got plans on it, can we get a drawl on it to bid it out, uh, what he used to be down there?
If you get the design, we'd have to tell him to look at a set of construction drawings together.
Yes.
That's where we are on the whole thing, is tell them what phase to do construction drawings or somebody else can do them based off of his drawings, I guess, either way.
Yeah.
Off his design. I'd say I haven't been doing since he's done anything so far.
Yeah, I mean, you can do that if you wanted to, I mean, but what we're talking about, we're not talking about paving the road, we're literally talking about paving and putting a parking space, would it have any expenses?
Striving. Striving. I will tell you, I had Cherokee come up and looked at paving the roads. Um, Dave recommended that we just have the concrete stuff put back in there because if we had the asphalt or whatever done, because it's currently concrete, you're going to have to pull all of that stuff out. Because otherwise there's some kind of ancient stuff and he said, basically, it's going to cost you a fortune. He gets, because I think the pricing that Bubba gave us for, and I'm not saying you have to use it, you can use anybody to do it. But the pricing that he gave us originally to do with the original estimate was like sixty-five hundred dollars. So I think this was making it a little more extensive. But just throwing that out there and this was the backup for Cherokee.
City Hall there, before this was that, uh, up that concrete to keep from crawling down the hill.
Yeah.
So, so I think what you're saying is, is before we, before we get construction drawings, how do we want to, do we want to get construction drawings to fix it? The way Michael said, which is dig everything out and go back? Or do we want to replace, for cost savings, what we already have and use that money for sidewalks and other things that we're, that we're currently working on? When I say sidewalks, we still want to put sidewalks from, you know, extend that sidewalk up next to this, up to this park area. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a cost thing. What's your thoughts, William, I mean, we'll start with you.
Throw them somewhere else, I'll be real with you.
I mean, well, construction drawings aren't cheap, so.
No, but if we've already paid to have a plan done for the whole area and we've already paid to have the plan done, we'll see if the plan works.
The plan's going to be a rip and replace, which is going to be a lot more money. Do we want to spend a lot more money right now for that?
And does the little bit that we're going to do there, does it affect the rest of the plan where then it makes, where the plan he drove didn't work because we got somebody else doing and designing this, we've already paid to have the whole thing designed? And is his design that extensive?
Well, we also didn't really use his design for the playground, we just kind of.
That's right, his directions were to design outside the fence.
Yeah, he did that done while we were waiting on him to do the design.
Yeah.
So. He included some design even, after we told him not to.
I think it's in an email, I think we all have it in the email somewhere, I just can't say.
When the parking lot and the sidewalk and everything was going to be incorporated in his plan, I'd hate to do it one way and then it not work out.
Gee, all the plan that's drawn, so.
So I'll read you the document from Michael Kidd and see what it looks like and then, and then we can talk about it again in a second. If you guys have those plans, if you could take a look back, it'd be good to know. Okay. Anything else with regards to the kitty park?
Eric, yes, did they ever replace a table?
Yeah, they came out at the top, because, um, we also have been told that adult swing posts were not stable. And she said that their guys checked on and said they were, but, yeah, I don't think that they, because the whole thing's shifting.
Yeah, Dave, you could go down there and swing on it and see.
Yeah, so if you could, that would be great. It was an adult guy that sat in it and just said, I mean, it's not like the point's going to come out, but I think they're, they probably hit hard and it just didn't keep going. And it's like, it, it wasn't an adult that was swinging, swinging, it was just kind of, you know, and then the posts were shifting some, so they shouldn't be shifting. So if someone else could, could swing and let me know, that would be great.
White test.
Yeah.
Distress test.
Say, well, a couple of adult men. I could come down and give you.
I mean, and not.
And it wasn't that many swinging, it was just kind of like your legs kind of walking back.
I take my babies to, to parks all over the place, we've gone to tons of the ones in, in Canton. Some of our kids, we have bigger, we have kids that are just like. My grandbaby, he's not, he's a junker, a hundred pounds, I mean, he's seven years old, but he's, you know, he, he's not a tiny baby.
My son was saying, so, but I see grown people sitting on those swings all the time, they shouldn't move.
They're watching their kid, it's a nice place to sit.
Yeah.
Okay, we can check on that, uh, if anybody wants to go down there and sit and swing.
I think they've got them in, and they should fix it.
They are, I said, in it.
In their less.
I think the guys just came. I think the guys just came and like.
Shook it and then take it out to them.
I think she's being right on. Mine's on the.
We can move on to new business. Um, I have number eight using cases, Kelsey, I'll turn this over to you, I'm Miss Sue's here tonight, welcome, glad you're here.
Okay, so before you freak out about pricing, I'm just going to show you some of this. Okay, so the second page of this was the estimate I requested from the company. We've looked at several different companies, this is the only one that we can really find that's even remotely similar to the cases that the libraries have given us or donated. This estimate is for ten cases, this is not an estimate for one case. Um, the total at the bottom was for eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. The main thing I was after was to try to find out what the shipping cost was going to be. They have a seven weekly time, which is kind of extreme. And this tenant went back and looked again, because the one that, that I picked just to try to get an estimate from didn't have lighting inside it. She found one, it did have lighting, it was a little bit less expensive, but they would like to start with, with maybe four of them. So I, I need to go back and check and see, because I'm sure the shipping would be less, I would hope the shipping would be less than twenty-eight hundred dollars on those. So just to kind of give you an idea, you don't necessarily have to run on it tonight, but, um, because we actually still need to do something about flooring prior to that. But to at least kind of get something on the radar, because we, we have to start getting stuff in there. We're not going to be on the marble floor this year, we just, the, the plant isn't going to be, so, you know, it was, there was just too much going on and they didn't want it to be not ready, so that then, next year when we are on, you know. So.
I reached out to Country Carpets, um, they have not gotten back with me yet, um, we have two prices, but that's, we wanted to get one more. So hopefully by the second, we'll have one more for, for pricing, um, and then we can take and see what it is. Okay, so.
The cabinet this tenant picked was, I'm trying to think of thirteen hundred dollars each, so.
And there were four of them?
Yeah, that's what she said they'd like to start with, because she may want to go and find some other ones that weren't all identical, because they had different types of, um, items to display. It just, and it took two weeks to get the estimate, we got one, I think I sent out like five emails.
I wouldn't like that, I'd like to have a plan, because I wouldn't like it to flow really good, so if we're good, we, we need to see if this company has the.
They have all kinds of stuff, they have like a bunch of different ones and, but the thing, it was taking so long to get an estimate, I was like, just give me, give me ten of whatever and I was just going to get some type of great estimate.
Okay, so.
They kind of assembled, sold or?
Sure, you got some to get, come on, we're going to, you're volunteer the. Sure, no, you got them to get, come on, we're gonna, you're volunteer the, you know. Be handy, we're gonna get you a shirt.
So, what I'd like to do, Ms. Sue and I'll go ahead and let you know, so, the four here that she's looking at that are lighted for thirteen hundred each. If we could look and see what other kinds you, what other kind you need and make sure that they have something that matches and.
They do, we already looked at them.
Get, get some pricing on that for October second meeting.
We already looked at all of them.
Or at least freestanding or do they have to be attached to the wall?
They're like this type of thing right here. They're like the ones that we got from the library, so they don't technically attach to the wall, but they're big, like heavy cases. They're like, the libraries had them in there.
And they were making sure that they were lighted, that the doors, we could operate them from the front. And they're locked, we'll be able to lock them. And there's one more item, that those cabinets fit on fours.
So they have measures?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we, we found some on Android and some other places, they just didn't have like really substantive weight to it. Like we could get them for a little bit less, but if, if the, like, somebody might come in.
Let's, let's do that, let's, let's find out if we can get the, the other, let's look at the other kind you need, so if we order, we'll order it one time.
Okay.
And get, that way we don't have shipping. So, if you could do that, if you could do that for October meeting, that would be good.
Me, oh, and then and Kelsey's been handling the cabinet stuff.
Good deal.
But I'll tell them that.
Any questions about that as, the, that's okay. Next up is going to be the. The amended agenda for the tax mileage rate. Again, I don't know that you need to vote on that, we're gonna be talking about it quarterly. So that we have updates regularly, I've got, and I've got meetings set up. So, I don't know that that would be a meeting thing or voting thing. Once we have all the information and we meet with, with folks that we need to meet with, we can have them, we can have somebody actually from maybe the county come in and speak at the council meeting.
I'd just like to make sure we're all together on it before we.
You, you guys do understand that, that, that this, this was not in this office and we're not the only ones with this problem. So. It, it's across the board.
And it's being addressed.
And it is gonna be addressed, so. Like I said, we're gonna have meetings to handle that.
We're not the only ones that are fresh coming right now.
No, we're not. So. The, the good thing about, there's a lot of things that come into this tax seven, we talked about it, the not just the mileage rate. We have rolled back consistently, this council has rolled back consistently since, since early two thousands. We do get lost that covers those rollbacks from, Cherokee County doesn't get, but the Pickens side does get a tax rate there. So, we only came in three percent under our budget this year and a lot of that is due to the fact that we had a lot of money coming from the state. So we need to look at all of that before we, you know, get real deep into wanting to cut taxes or, or things like that.
Now, if your county has lost, wouldn't that, wouldn't you be rolling it back more instead of this?
It's a factor, it still is.
But Cherokee don't have lost, but we've rolled theirs back more, I was just.
And we may have to, we may have to adjust those numbers and that's one of the things that we're gonna look at, we're gonna address the Cherokee side.
I was like, the Pickens side is, it's kind of at a way of proportion.
Is it, and I, and like I said, I haven't completely looked at it, we, we are just starting it. I'll, I'll report quarterly on it and let you know where we are with everything, what we find. I'll get the exact tax digest for both, for both Pickens and Cherokee and then.
The digest on Cherokee's, I think it's like fifty percent more, like value wise, though. I think a lot of it has to do with inflationary growth and the way we break assessments. Because of the way everything's calculated, Cherokee County is substantially different as far as their dynamics and the Pickens. As far as the growth and all of that, but all of the, there's so many different moving parts inside of how the mileage is calculated. That I think that. This has went on for many, many years of, and it's, it's, that's why you see the different mileage rates, it's because of the difference in the way the counties have grown over the years. And so, I, I, it's definitely something that needs to be looked at, but I, I don't know. I don't, I wouldn't know without having to look at the history of why and how those mileage rate numbers got so different over the years.
I thought you had like a calculation you used to.
Yes, it is, but it's, it's a, it's a rolling number from year to year, so it started whenever, way back when.
Well, five years ago when they were fairly close, fairly, and it's got like, it's way off, I mean, within five years.
And it's, like I said, it's the, the reassessments and then inflationary growth is numbers that is given to us by the tax assessor's office, the tax commissioner. So, when we plug those into the spreadsheets that's provided by the state, it automatically calculates that for you. So, in order to change that, you would literally have to do a reset. Like, we would have to reset and put everybody back on the same level. But it, it all depends on, because again, Cherokee County is substantially different and the numbers we get from them are based off of how their growth and how they, they do things and their governing body as far as the tax assessor's office versus Pickens County. And if you look at it, it's just, it's two totally different, and it's, you would have to do a reset. We would have to do a reset and figure out how to put everybody back on the same level. Whether that look like a increase or a complete past rollback, rollback. You know, it, we would have to really do some research.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see it within like two tenths of a mil or something, instead of double for one side.
We can, we can see what that looks to, so, like I said, we, we've started those. We figured it better to start now, first, you know, now than it is to start later, so we'll, we'll be at it. We'll, we'll at least have a, a better idea of where we are within the next three months, six months.
Wait before deadline.
Yeah. Yeah, wait for the deadline.
Well, we need to start, when we do Cherokee, we need to be prepared and Pickens needs to be prepared to allow us to kind of do it the same. Because we're so odd, because we are two different counties and two different digests. So, when we start Cherokee's process, because, you know, we, we did, like with Cherokee, we had work session, we had public hearings, we had all that, we had time to talk about it. But with Pickens, we didn't have time to talk about anything because we were on a deadline. To give you an idea, we started getting numbers from Cherokee County, May eighth, I believe, was preliminary. They got, actually it was May eleventh, and he sent me the actual numbers, May nineteenth. The digest was approved by the county. It was July thirteenth this year because they had so much going on. The, the state deadline for the assessor to release the, the digest to the commissioner is July fifteenth. It, it's literally in the manual. And that gives you time to do the meetings and talk about it and plan.
Well, don't Pickens give you till the end of July?
Oh, oh wait, it gets better. So, the, the state, the state deadline is literally, it's July fifteenth. So, it's page sixty-four of the assessor's manual, July fifteenth. It, we have no problems on the Cherokee side, it's, it's always by the deadline, if not better. So, we get the digest from Pickens County mid to end August. The assessors, I mean, the commissioner's deadline to submit this to the DOR at the state is September first. So how can the commissioner, I mean, yeah, the commissioner submit this to the state in Pickens if we're not even getting the digest till like mid-end August? So, in order for him to get his stuff in and especially to do our billing, which our agreement with Pickens says that we'll have our mileage set by July thirty-first. So we're sparing the lady stuff done in order to have him do our billing. So it's not, I mean, if we were getting stuff from Pickens along the same lines that we're getting stuff from Cherokee, there, there would be no issues.
I mean, the, the appeal process for like reassessments and stuff goes through, y'all know the date, as soon as July or something. I mean, they can't, they gotta have those appeals done.
It can still go, because Cherokee's still doing it, I'm still getting them. And the only thing is, is there's, there's literally one sheet of paper that has to be done for every property.
It still goes?
The, Cherokee hasn't turned it in. Somebody doesn't want to do it.
Right.
So they sit on the digest. That's basically what it comes down to. Cherokee, Pickens has, I think, twenty-seven thousand parcels, Cherokee has a hundred and something thousand parcels, but yet they're able to maintain and stick to the deadline. But regardless, we know that the tax, the mileage rate savings comes and we know all year long, so we got plenty of time to figure it out. So it's not, I mean, it, it's not us sitting on it and waiting to the last minute to give it to you guys. It's, you know, as soon as it, it's given, it's like, because then the, as the paper has. It's a problem, can't be won, though. You know, so it's, it's a nightmare. I think though, if, in order to do a whole lot of changes with the mileage rate, we would need to advertise, we do a, it would, it would take some public hearings and some advertising that we would need to do. And we would, we would need, we would need a timeline to get to that point, to legally be able to adopt the mileage rate. Michael, shit.
Is there anything else that you feel like we could be doing? Direct for that? I mean, we've got meetings set, I must have had the first one today, we've got meetings set up.
I think today, after today and moving forward with those meetings, I think that's gonna be, give us clarity on what to do going forward.
And when we come to the meetings with the council, and we can do some work sessions with us guys in early, early fall, you know, mid, or mid-fall. We really need to take a look at our budget as well, make sure where we are with that. And, because the majority of our tax stuff that's coming in is going out of fire tax. We've got, what did we say today, a hundred, it was a hundred and nineteen and we're expecting that to be a hundred and twenty-one? But, like I said, again, that's another avenue for me to explore with, with the possibility of reduction that are based on call volume and, and other things that, that I think is benefit us. So, we'll, I'll work that avenue as well.
I thought the Cherokee County Fire Tax was a sign for unincorporated and incorporated.
They changed it, they came in meetings about two years ago and it went into effect last year. Unfortunately. You know, they need those mass cabinets trucks.
The IGN with Pickens on the fire, would that still keep us in compliance with the charter?
With an SDS, yes, but if you, there has to be a fee associated, which wouldn't be bad, but we still need, the, the bigger issue is, is meeting with Sherri Collett and also meeting with Prather to see what, what the ISO, what we're looking at. You don't wanna just go do an SDS if they're, if they know that their ISO rating's gonna jump to a six, right? Because that means your, your homeowner's insurance is gonna go down. So Sherri's gonna, we'll get her to, to, you know, to just do some scenarios with us to see what we have.
My brother's got a house in Tate, it's well outside of Nelson, it is homeowner's insurance. His house appraised for more than mine and it's about the same price, so I mean.
Well, right now, that's because right now they have four, but they know it is, so they, they are, they're, they're gonna have to take on, that's what he told us today, it's not if, it's when we take on talking rock, so.
There's other factors, like how far you are from a fire hydrant, I mean, there's different.
What do you say, they have five miles, if you're more than five miles from a fire, it's from a fire station, then you go up automatically.
Yeah. Luckily, we got one about two and a half miles away.
Well, we have this one here that counts for the Cherokee side and it counts for, you know, in here, so that's an additive for, for everybody in the city. But if we do an SDS, and like I said, there's, there's a lot of factors to it, I, I don't even wanna speculate, I'd rather get all the information. And then if we need to have Tim Prather come in and.
I thought that's why they hired him to get their fire rating down.
Probably will, and it takes some people to get it fixed, and they have been getting it down, but if they have to take on talking rock, it's going to increase it until they get it fixed.
Yeah, we're six points away from authority.
Three points away.
Three points away from authority.
They need to invite it because you knew that this thing that's talking rock has gotten up.
So, a lot of factors there, but like I said, I do think that there's, there's some opportunity for some reduction there if, if we can meet with, with Cherokee County and have those conversations. Okay, next up, we have anything else about, anything else about the tax stuff? Okay. Anybody that wants to be a part of those meetings there during the day, I usually try to schedule them around eleven-thirty, we'll let you guys know, and if anybody wants to come to those, you're more than welcome to. Or if you would like me to, you'd like to send me some questions, the, you know, that you want me to get answers to, we're happy to do that. Move on to item B, and that is our equipment disposal. So David, I'll let you throw house.
I'd just like to see us run them through the auction, everything we get rid of, go through the, not just take whatever people offers us for them.
We have a policy.
We do have a policy, so, and that's what I wanted to get, so. Transfer, disposal of assets, now I'll read it so we can make sure we're all on the same page before we move forward with any voting. All capital assets are the property of the city. They may not be donated, discarded, or transferred to any other owner without the city manager slash mayor direct authorization. Department should send all surplus assets to the mayor for dis, for disposition. Transfer or disposal of vehicles must be coordinated with the mayor. The disposition of capital assets the city purchased with federal grants must be, must follow the federal guidelines. The guidelines of the specific grant or federal general guidelines will dictate the duration of the time that the asset must remain property of the city. The guidelines will also indicate the disposition of the proceeds from the sale of the asset, and I'll let you talk to that just briefly and explain, break that down, what that means. I know it has to do with us, and I'm gonna get my glasses out while you do it, us putting, if we sell something that was bought with SLOs funds, that kind of stuff.
Anything that's bought with SLOs funds would go, technically, if its useful life is over, it can go back into the general fund.
Okay. And if not, then it gets.
But if it's still of value and is willing to just, then it would, it would need to go back into SLOs.
Any questions?
We have a useful law also.
Yeah, and if we replace stuff in five years, I mean, it's kind of, that's where you kind of.
You're literally, you're disposing it because it technically has no value.
Well, I mean, I don't care where the money goes back to, it needs to go back to the rightful place, but I'm talking about how we sell.
Yeah, about ten.
Not just taking offers from Neps and Tractor or anybody else. We run it through the auction and get a fair auction price for it. Because you don't know what nothing's worth unless you're, you have everybody up to you to bet on.
Generally speaking, I know that auctions don't bring as much usually as, as it would be.
The ones I go to, they bring a whole lot more, but where you gonna offer?
Where you go to?
Up your, when I went up here to the back there. To the school, you're like that. They would, we'd be bringing three hundred dollars for a hundred dollar winner.
Also, I'll go ahead and finish reading, all sales of the city of real property or personal property with an assigned value of more than five hundred dollars must be offered for purchase. Either by sealed bids or, or by auction to the highest bidder. Notice the, the sale must be published once in the official newspaper of the city or in the newspaper of the general circulation in the city. The legal notice must appear not less than fifteen days or more than sixty days prior to the date of the sale. The notice must contain a brief description of the property and the condition of the sale. If the sale is by sealed bid, the bid shall be open in, shall be open in public at the time and place stated in the legal notice. The bid shall be kept available for the public inspection for sixty days, and the city may reject any and all bids or cancel a proposed sale. Property with, property with an estimate, estimated value of less than five hundred dollars may be sold without regard. Property with an, property with an estimate estimated value of less than five hundred dollars may be sold without regard to the above provisions. Such as sales may be made in the open market without advertisement and without acceptance of bids. The city has the power to estimate the value of the property being sold. So that's what, that's what it says for us, and then. And I mean, I think, I do think, I mean, I think it it fills it out for some. Council can choose to do sealed bids, the council can choose to, um, to to do a trade if they need to. So are we wanting to change our policy?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
That doesn't say nothing about trading.
It says.
Auctions.
It's auction, even though it's five hundred dollars. That's, that's what we need to be doing.
So how do we trade the other equipment in, just knowing our policy? Oh, it has to do.
But from this point forward, we need to do it like.
We need to sell stuff in auctions, say, I mean, if we need to change a policy, whatever.
I think it had always been.
You know, we've never made anything except on one thing at auction that we've sold, and that's happened before.
Yeah.
That's all we ever made, that's the first thing we ever made, rest of the tractor we sold.
And the other problem is sitting on stuff.
It ain't really about the money, it's more about transparency to me.
I get that, but at the same time, we don't have anywhere to store it, like the maintenance building is too small.
Where you next store it for, I mean.
The next government auction's not till May.
You can go deals, you can list it and sell it in ten days.
I get that.
It's open, transparent, everybody can log in and see it.
I understand that, who's going to deal with it during that time, the questions, who, like if somebody wants to concede it? I'm sorry, I'm already dealing with like five different departments. I don't have time to come meet somebody.
There's been countless times when you're like, I'm just sitting here.
Yeah, whenever I first started filling in, that's fine, there's times that I'm here till six o'clock at night handling stuff. If you want to deal with it, that's perfectly fine. If you want to sign up and handle that, you need more than willing.
I don't think it would be a whole lot of work to answer a few calls on a lawnmower.
I don't know anything about a lawnmower.
Well, let Ricky do that.
Ricky doesn't do computers. He literally doesn't, he doesn't even have a city email.
I'll make a motion that we.
Hey, that's for me, buddy.
That's for you?
That's for me to make, I don't do the motions, but let's, let's get everybody's input. I'd like to get, I know James had his input, I'd like to get Williams', I'd like to get Chrissy's before we vote on anything. I mean, I don't think it has to be contentious, but I think that we need to.
Start with not being contentious, Mr. Lawery, even the councils, trying to make motions. I know the mayor gets to appointment, they say we'll go to a point where I'll entertain a motion, but the council's free to make motions.
Honestly, that's just something I'll have to check on, yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, whether or not. Like who will take.
Yeah, that's the reason why I'm asking you.
I will have to.
So it's Robert's rule.
Just look into and we'll get back with you.
Yeah, I know, I said, the head's always been, you get to a point where you say, I'll entertain a motion, something like that, but it's.
Sure, yeah, so we can certainly look into it and address it, it won't be hard to figure out, I just don't want to take it wrong.
Just a question there, uh, our policy says we do one of two things. Got the budget amendment to get you some help, so where are we at on that?
There was a lady supposed to come in and put an application, and I haven't heard anything.
I did have a call last week from a lady that that lives in Sutton Nelson, and she did send a resume, so we do have one resume.
I mean, we.
Yeah, we advertise it in Cherokee and Pickens County.
Uh, no, not, not as of yet.
Can we get that advertised and send it back to the council? And then, as I said, we've got one or two options depending on what comes up, we can decide at that point. If it's something, I believe, the last piece of equipment we put out for bid and we set up what we thought was a fair minimum to begin with.
That's the other thing, Ken, when when we put these things at auction, it says, it says in here that the the council can set the bid. Do we want to set the bid in here or do we want the auction, can you do that with an auction?
Yeah, with an auction.
I've never been to any of the sites, but I think you could usually set them in.
No, I've never, I've never been to an auction like that.
And I know it clearly says you do one of two things with anything that's valued at more than five hundred dollars, so that's what we've got to do.
With the web-based, I mean, I have somebody from Tennessee or Alabama.
That definitely gets a lot of audience.
It's just the simplicity too and the transparency is pretty appealing to it.
I mean, we talked about it before every, before every, anytime anything is bid out or sold anyway, it's the council's hat. It's at your discretion on whether you do a sealed bid or you do an auction.
I said, I don't much have a problem with a bid, like I said, if it's something that I think's funny, you can always set a minimum, same plus.
Now, do you, so we've, we've got the Roy Dobbs auction, is it Roy Dobbs?
No, it's Jeff Dobbs.
So we got Dobson, um, Dobson auctions in, in Pickens, now is there another?
Government auction every day. There's another government thing that they're.
I was going to say, is there another one that 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 we're, I'm not familiar with any of them, I'll be honest with you all about it. So is there another one that, is anybody familiar with any of them?
Not that many. A lot of them use the web-based, there's a couple of web-based auction companies. Good Deals is one I don't know.
Good Deals? Good Deals, okay. What other word it's signed up on is the word that's on there is, does that have a hard to put it on you? Can you check, I know which one? So we've got Good Deals, and then we have, and then we've got the one that's in May for, and that's just every May?
Yeah, it's a government auction that Dobson does.
Dobson does an auction for Cherokee County at the fairgrounds in Cherokee County, I can't remember the address.
It's a fairgrounds.
And it's amazing, only one time a year?
That's the one we sold the truck in.
For that one, can we set a, can we set a minimum? Does anybody know?
They usually want to take a reserve.
You can have a, you can have a reserve on it, yeah, but. I mean, the website is the most appealing, if you got random times of year, you're getting rid of something, you ain't got to let it sit for six or eight months. You can just go ahead and list it, you can do like a ten day auction or whatever.
And that's on the web-based?
Yeah, it can be listed whenever.
You got to register, photos and list everything, hire and stuff on that thing.
Have you ever bought, and I'm not being a smartass either, have you ever bought anything on an auction, Nathan, is it something that you can give some direction on?
Yeah, when you get a, you got to log in and create an account and stuff, just like we would have to do before we list anything. We have to create an account and then have to have the bank information and all that stuff.
Okay, so if we, did we, we could try it, I mean, it's not going to hurt anything, have we sold the, have we sold the tractor, I mean, the lawnmower? For bids? Do we have a, do we, speaking of that, do we have a reserve for that, do we know what, we want a three thousand dollar?
I mean, since that's already in the works, I'll just leave it like it is, but moving forward, we can try the website.
If we've got a three thousand dollar reserve, we don't, we don't meet it, then put it on the, put it on the website and see, we can try it. I'm not, I, like I said, I've not done that before. Okay. Kristen, you have anything?
No, I mean, I think the, I think the policy already allows for that, the auction, so. I I don't think that an auction necessarily should be a have to, since we already have a policy that says you can do it either or.
Yeah, not so, we can trade stuff in, but we did several months ago.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a look into that and see.
What's the term saying, what do you say about turn, trading?
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's.
I have not seen it, so. It says the capital assets are property of, properties may be donated.
You can transfer that. This one's one of the stuff we're trading in, we're splosh purchase items, and we're purchasing another splosh item. And it goes back to that useful life, yeah.
Wait, just make it follow our own policy.
Yeah, for proposed depreciation each asset signed as an estimated useful life, useful lives are based upon the category of assets. The life of the asset begins when it is, when it is put into service, which is recognized as the invoice date. The estimated life shall be based on those recommended by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and the Government Finance Officers Association and the city's experience.
So the way that when you do your financials, your capital assets are depreciated? And so once you get to, when you, when you take on this capital asset, they initially start with a schedule of depreciation. So over the course of a few years, basically on the financial statements, it looks like the, they literally have a value, even though we can still use a lot of that, it's. So that, that's how that is kind of determined, and that's why you go by the useful life from a financial part of.
So if you keep something ten years, you ain't got to worry about where the money goes when it sells completely.
I mean, you still need to pay attention to it, but.
Yeah, I mean, you use it, I mean, you're not bound to use it in this life or whatever.
Basically, because it's disposed.
Which is not going to be a whole lot of money anyways.
But it could be of value because you are going to get monetary or some sort of, that's going to go back into your capital. It's going to go back into your financial statements because you're going to receive it as a revenue.
So you could ask Jeff and what, because I'd like to know, I don't want to do something wrong either. Ask Jeff what the law says about trading in a, an asset versus auctioning it or doing a sealed bid. And I'm going to call my, I'll call my, our policy book too, and I'll also look into the, the Government Finance Association and the, the Governmental Accounting Board standards to see what they say.
What's the document that you're?
It's our, it's our policy.
So where is it?
I was curious as to what page it was.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out where exactly this is pulled from.
It's our policy though.
It's under finance.
Financial is an extraordinary.
And I'm, financial policy, and I'll, and I'll also go and look to, and look at the.
Specialized specialty.
Two references there for the.
Yeah, sure, I mean, we're obviously happy to look into it.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I don't want to do something that's wrong, but, and Jeff's been here when we voted to trade things in, and I think he would have, he would have called me on it. We'll make a copy of that for you, that will go back and move. Did you have anything?
No, I'll see.
David, do you have anything else there?
Just wanted to follow our policy.
Follow policy, okay. So do you want to guys, does this need a vote or?
Not following policy.
I'm just saying. This was, this was purpose, it's the one thing, we're doing it the right way. Yeah, we'll give you a copy of that, and we'll, we'll also let you know exactly, we'll put up, we'll put a note on there with exactly where it came from. So at this time, I would like a motion to move to executive session.
And make a motion to move.
I'll say.
All of them, okay. From closing executive session.
Make a motion to cover the executive.
I'll make it.